All right. We'll call to order the town council meeting of December 20th, 2022. It is seven o'clock. We are in the Harvey hearing room. Call to order and roll call Denise.
Counsel Honan.
Here.
Counsel Fucilo. Counsel Munson.
Here.
Counsel Belcher.
Here.
Counsel DiMarco.
Here.
Counsel Flotkott.
Here.
Counsel Aiello. Vice President Ruggiero.
Here.
President Luteri.
Here. Please stand for the pledge by our town manager, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. It is for republic, which extends one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have minutes that have been circulated from the December 6th meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Counsel Flotkott, second by Counsel DiMarco. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no, the ayes have it. Do we have Christian up? For general information recommendation, we have a presentation from Axon Enterprises, and we have Christian Gardner here with us via Zoom to give us a presentation on the proposed body cameras for the police officers. Christian, thank you very much for taking time out of your day.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. How are you?
We're well, thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to just jump right into here with Ben Parkin, Shabib, and County Manager Moreno as well. Thank you for having me. Really what we have been discussing is the Axon Body 3 Body Cameras. And I just want to make sure that everybody's able to see my screen there. Can you all see that okay?
Yes.
Will it go?
Yes.
Perfect. So really Axon is the market leader in body worn cameras. Recently, we had Swamp Scott PD sign on and Man of the Arctic, as well as East Hampton and Western Mass, and there are a couple other local agencies, specifically NPD, that's using the cameras as well. So what we have is just a really connected device, which is the body camera, but also will tie into the TASER 7 as well. I'm going to share at one point and show you how that works. But the body cameras themselves are going to work in Evidence.com to allow for unlimited storage of anything that is recorded by an officer. And once it's stored in Evidence.com, each agency has its own instance. So the department has its own instance of Evidence.com and allows for everything to be held in one place. It's held in file. It's extremely protected as well. We have six data centers across the country, and we are Monster Sauce's largest partner to hold that information that's reported by police officers. So you can see that the digital evidence that you may think of is a little bit different just from the video that's recorded. It's literally any digital file can be held in Evidence.com. And what we see is the use of force goes down and the complaints lower as well in officers who wear a body camera. Because it really gives visibility into the process and protects the officers as well. The Body 3 is going to be really just a camera that holds 64 gigs of storage. Whenever an officer is going to put the camera into a dock, the evidence will offload the information and automatically go into Evidence.com. We have numerous mounted available for officers to be able to wear comfortably on their person. And we also have devices that will automatically activate the body camera. I have my TASER 7 in here. We have technology that goes into TASER batteries. Once the TASER is turned on, it automatically activates the camera. There is also a signal sidearm device that can be put on the service pistol holster. So if an officer were to break under the body camera, it would deactivate it. And we have devices that can go inside of the Cruisers as well and wipe our activation. If you were to open a door, it would activate the camera. Another signal may be speed threshold, or if a gun is removed from the gun rack in the backseat of the car. And the purpose of the different signals to activate the body camera is to take out the manual password. We want to make sure that the camera is recording what the officer needs most. We really work off the four pillars: capturing the information, uploading it over the dock, managing the files in Evidence.com, and the ability to share. The pre-event buffer is going to be integral to that. What we have set is software inside of the camera to activate and record 30 seconds before the camera is actually recorded. So footage is recorded 30 seconds in up to two minutes before the camera starts recording. We also have clear frame playback. Anytime a frame is needed for court, we want to make sure that it's clear, it's presentable, and there are no questions of anything. And this is just a side-by-side view of how we have improved this over our previous version And the uploading is just done through a dock-and-walk workflow. We do have the ability to offload over Wi-Fi. However, most agencies will choose to put the AV3 into a dock, which is going to be wired into the internet to allow for that offloading of evidence that's being recorded. The managing aspect is all going to be done in Evidence.com, and you'll be able to ingest maybe real world footage as well if that's needed. But the important thing is having everything in one place with the assigned specific categories for evidence to fall into. And this is really just a top-level view of how it would look inside of Evidence.com. The important thing as well is Axon is undefeated in court cases with the digital evidence integrity. There's an audit trial that officers or administrators of the program are able to download to see who may have played a video, who may have accessed a video, or performed something like redaction on a video. We also have auto-tagging that would be set up to tie into the CAT system and make sure any video that is ingested into the system is automatically categorized to take that away from the officer so that they don't have to spend time categorizing videos and adding in that information. There is apps that are available as well to be able to manage the evidence. If they have to add in notes after something is recorded, you can do that inside of the live-on review, and then it would be moved into Evidence.com. One of the largest features of Evidence.com is sharing the digital evidence. All district attorneys will receive a free license for Evidence.com, and that way Chief, if he needs to share something with the district attorney, is able to just seamlessly share that by adding in the district attorney's email address and sending him that information. This is a look at the redaction software that we have included as well. What it is, is just allowing you to click three buttons, and we're going to redact any in-car terminals, which we might call the MDTs, license plates, as well as spaces. And once you are using a redaction tool, all you're doing is clicking this blue button right here to either redact or unredact the information in the video. That is a quick, that is a look at really what the Axon Body 3 is. 64 gigabytes to hold any installation in there. What I'm going to show you as well is the activation technology that comes in with the TASERS or other signal devices you're able to use. So if I turn on my TASER, it automatically activates the body camera to run. And that's more useful in stressful situations if you see officers in combat every day. Because like I said, we do want to make sure that the password to turn on the camera is taken away, and it's automatically activated.
Thank you very much, Christian, for that presentation. Greatly appreciated. I will ask this, Chief, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I just want to give a quick overview of how to become to Axion. And again, it's because of the redaction software. It's far superior than other people that we've talked to. One particular program, WatchGod, they have their current system as dashboard cameras. And the Cruisers, they've been bought out by Marola-Rola. Since they've been bought out and taken over from Marola-Rola, we haven't been happy with their customer service. Their redaction tool sits outside their platform. It's not incorporated in their software, which is another issue for me as well. So overall, Boston Police, Lynn Police, Revere Police are now leading towards Axion. So our whole region, the idea is to go with Axion because our regions is going to be all integratable with Axion. Again, what WatchGod doesn't offer is the interoperability between the device and the firearm and the TASER. I don't want officers thinking, oh, I have to turn this on before I draw my weapon. These seconds could cost someone their life. So we have everything as automatic as possible. It will remove human error. Same with the redaction tool. Once you redact that face in one image, it'll go through the system and redact it in any image it sees that face in, saving hours, if not days, of time on redactions. Again, not just for the attorney's level. We have public records requests. I redact, you know, probably 15 reports a day on our public records request system, thanks to Denise. But the redaction tool is integrated in that public records request system, and it saves me a significant time just to be able to click the redaction button and do it right there live. So for all those reasons, Axion is the reason why we chose to go with this company. Tell me, as you met and talked to him separately outside of my conversations with him, to drill down on what he needed to drill down on as well. So if there's any questions about the process, I'd be happy to answer them. Any questions, you know, about the device? I just want to also leave, we're negotiating with the unions currently on a policy to be in place. We looked at the final recommendations that the Body 1 Camera Commission that was set up through police reform has just reported back August 2nd of this year to the Senate. The Senate hasn't taken any action on those recommendations yet, but we're looking at those recommendations and trying to include as many of them as possible in our policy because we know that those will become law and those will be required to actually have in our policy. Much to Christian's demise, maybe it was me sitting there with the final draft saying, can your camera do this, this, this? And they talked about the, you know, destructibility of the camera, the temperature, extreme cold, the extreme heat. Can your, does your camera meet these specifications? So we sat and we went through everything. Christian went back to his engineers and assured me that they can meet the requirements that are recommended by the Body 1 Camera Commission in the future. And, you know, the good thing about this program as well is they'll replace any camera that needed to be replaced, and then in five years, they'll replace all the cameras. So again, those are added benefits which we wouldn't get if we went with the WatchGod company. So those are the reasons we chose it. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Vice President Joe.
Thank you, Christian. Thank you, Chief, for the information. But could we just maybe take a step back and level set and just kind of explain why we're here in the first place talking about, you know, body cameras? And it's not a, to my understanding, this isn't a yes or a no on if we're implementing body cameras. It's, you know, are we going Axion or not? Right? That's the question that's posed to the council.
I think our question is, this is, they're entering into a five-year, potentially a five-year contract.
Right.
Anything over three years, the town manager needs our blessing on, basically.
Sure, okay.
So if this was a three-year contract, we wouldn't be here right now.
Right.
So the company that they chose, and this is why the presentation, I guess to get back to your point, they're an incredibly well-organized and well-run company, and their equipment is top-notch. But the reason why we are here legally is because it's a five-year contract that they're entering into.
Okay. And I think that's important for everyone to understand.
Counsel Munson.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you, Christian. And I'm just curious, was body cams mandated by the state or the federal government? Or is this something that you're just going above and beyond to kind of make?
Sure. So no, they're not mandated by the state as of yet, and they're not mandated by the federal government as of yet. Some police departments in some communities are mandated under a DOJ's consent decree because they have violated constitutional rights or alleged to have violated constitutional rights. It is certainly the best practices in policing nowadays for transparency and accountability that people wanted to see after the Judge Floyd death. And that's what brought us here. That was the crux of police reform, right? Although that happened many miles away from us, it still affected us. Again, talking to the town manager when he came in, we felt that, you know, what, we can get, we can apply for the grant. If we get the grant, we'll go full steam ahead on this, on this process. So again, I think it's an assurance that the police department is accountable and that we're going to be transparent on any major incidents. Certainly, you know, video played a major part in the investigation of the shooting on Shirley Street. Doorbell cameras and everything else from cars and dashboard cameras that people have in their own cars, we got a lot of video in. Certainly, our Cruisers and our dashboards gave us some perspective, but it didn't give us the full perspective. I'd like to have the full perspective from the officer's standpoint. Again, that case was crystal clear. We were fortunate to have a textbook case, I like to call it, that there was no question the officer did the right thing to save many lives on that day. But there's been some cases out there in other communities, close and far from us, that have a mint textbook. And certainly the video, we should have the video there to tell us the full story if there's ever called into question.
One last question, and I don't want to belabor it. And I think this is one I found super supportive. It looks like it's mutually beneficial to both the police and the public, and things, I think it's wonderful. But in terms of the contract, did you say that it five years automatically renews? And with that renewal, does it actually get new cameras? Or will there be constant upgrades to the software on the cameras?
Software question, constant upgrades. Again, as Christian represented, a lot of places dock and don't rely on the Wi-Fi to do those upgrades. We probably use the docking station to do the upgrades. Officers will be required at the end of their shift, by the end of their shift, is to dock. So all the, all the video would go up and be tagged, and then also all the updates for that eight-hour period, 10-hour period, they would be upgraded as well. So I'm sure Axion pushes them out as quickly as they can once they have an issue. You know, again, the five-year contract, it is a five-year contract. So there's no automatic renewals. But again, the camera replacement, if there's a damaged camera, they will replace it under the lease program, and in five years, a full replacement of the cameras with the continuation of a new contract.
This should be within your budget anyway. It's just that the fact that it's five years.
I wouldn't represent that council. I was certainly, you know.
We'll be in the budget moving forward, but we're going to have to tell you a lot of the money for it.
So this year, we have an $84,000 grant that we will, we'll be looking to utilize that for the first year of the purchase of the lease and the cameras and the batteries that have to be swapped out of the TASERS to have that automatic activation. The batteries that currently exist in the TASERS won't do that, but that can all be fit into the grant. So we use all of the $84,000 of the grant this year. And then future years, the town manager's representative, he'd give you unlimited amount of money. So in future years, we're going to figure it out. We're going to budget it. It's a capital expense. This is a capital expense, is an investment in the community as well as the police department.
Thank you. Counsel DiMarco.
Thank you. Christian, you had mentioned Microsoft and cloud technology, and that's a lot to take in everything. But I assume the cloud technology you're using is Azure? That's correct? Okay. So with the redactions, with the redaction ability in the software, if we redact, there's still going to be a normal copy left in the cloud, correct? So we don't lose anything completely?
The original was never altered, and the audit trial calls to that as well.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah. And if I may also, the agency would be receiving new cameras after two and a half years and five years. And if we were to release the new version of our camera inside of those two and a half years, the agency would receive that camera with the new software.
Okay. Thank you.
And just so you know, they're also required, Axion is required, to meet the FBI standards on cloud security.
Any other questions? Again, Christian, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. We will be looking at this for a possible vote at an old business.
Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christian. Appreciate it.
All right. Public hearings, we have two public hearings tonight. We'll open the first public hearing to appropriate $750,125 to replace lead water service lines. Now, this is something that we've done for many years now. We are down to, I think, a little over 400 residences in the town with lead service lines. We have been trying to do 100 services a year, and this will keep us on track for that. So in the next four years, we should be done. I will ask the DPW director to...
Mostly accurate. So we have 416 full lead service lines. There's still partial lead service lines out there, above and beyond that. But this will be our fourth, our fourth contract to remove 100 services, full lead services annually. Once those are down, that'll be an administration decision if we want to continue the funding to go after the partials, which will consider tier two. We're addressing the tier one services per DEP mandate at the moment.
And these are a zero-interest MWRA loan, correct? Yes. Do we have anybody that'd like to speak for or against this? From the public? Or from the council? This was discussed earlier this evening in Finance Committee report, and it will, it has come out with positive recommendation. Is there any other questions? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and we will go to the, open another public hearing on the fiscal '23 tax classification. Now, this is a yearly event also, and we have several members here with us. Patrick Haring, thank you. Peter Gill, Kathy Hickey, and Alan Maruzzi, thank you very much for attending. And I will turn it over to Patrick.
Good evening. I'm Patrick Haring. I'm the interim assessor in the town of Winthrop, representing the Board of Assessors tonight and presenting this information to you to make this yearly decision on the classification shift in the town. So we're talking about fiscal year 2023 this year. The purpose is mainly for the town council to determine the allocation of the local property tax to be borne by the four classes of real property and personal property for this fiscal year. It's the responsibility as assessors to provide the council with the relevant information and to discuss its fiscal effects and possible alternatives. So the five classes of real estate and personal property are residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal property. These classifications are codes given to us by the Department of Revenue, and all valuation is classified this way. Just some information about this fiscal year 23. It is a, what was called a revaluation year, it's now called a certification year. It's a five-year certification in that every city and town in Massachusetts must undergo a certification every five years, ending up in a 10-year cycle. So each year, the Department of Revenue certifies the values and audits the operations of the assessor's office every five years. This is the certification year. The interim years, similar procedures are done, but it is not audited by the Department of Revenue to this extent as a certification. So the values have been totally updated in the town for this fiscal year, utilizing the market of 2021. So residential being the biggest class in the town, I try to just focus in to say what has happened with the values and how it affects the average single-family taxpayer. So I'm just comparing fiscal year 23 with the last fiscal year 22. The average single-family home in '22 was $554,013. It has increased about 12.8% to $624,098.2, which means that's the average value of the average single family in the town. The residential class increased from last year to this year around 13.21%. The average single-family bill last year was $6,515.19. With this estimated tax rate that we're proposing tonight, that single-family tax bill would rise to $6,687.30, which is about a 2.25% increase, or $172.11. The tax rate, if it holds at $10.70, is a decrease from the prior year of $11.76 of about 9.2%. That's pending. So the residential class in the town did rise slightly, about 9% to 93.79% of the town is residential. So it's just a comparing now for commercial and industrial and personal property, the same kind of scenario of what is happening to the average. The average commercial industrial value last year was about $703,889. It did increase this year to $8,193.61, about 16% increase on the commercial. The class overall has risen about 14.69%. And the average tax bill for a commercial was $8,277. It will be in fiscal year 23, $8,767, which is about a 6% increase. The rate, if you decide tonight to keep it the same, historically, it has, it has been the same tax rate for commercial, industrial, and residential. We believe it'll be $10.70, and it would be the same decrease of 9%. The commercial class rose slightly, 1.47%. Personal property class is assessed for all businesses in the town, and utilities pay the most, are the most assessed. The class increased about 2% to about $48,292.77. Overall, that class decreased, increased 1.41%. So the $10.70 is an estimate right now to our best ability. Once this deciding factor happens tonight, we believe it will be $10.70. The assessor's office throughout the year looks at properties to keep up with our cyclical data collection, or looking at every property within 10 years. But we are always looking at building permits to sales. So this year for growth, 267 properties that we looked at contributed to new growth calculated from building permits and the cyclical data collection that we have been performing. Within the commercial industrial class, 21 properties contributed to growth, and within the personal property class, 191 accounts contributed to growth. The new growth is utilized in calculating your levy from year to year, the amount of run your town. It's, you know, the increase of the levy is 2.5% plus the amount of growth. So the growth is an important number that we calculate. It's kind of average for this year. It's contributed $236,683. So the total taxable value of the town was $3,333,931,935. This year, it's $3,431,484,875, a 13.1% increase in value. We know the market is very volatile. Overall, the residential open space portion of the town is 93.8%, with the commercial, industrial, personal property class being only around 6.2% of the valuation of the town. of the valuation of the town. On page five, there is an error on the first tax rate. At the time that I had put this together, the estimate was ten sixty-six. For a tax rate, it is actually ten dollars and seventy cents. If you agree to adopt a uniform rate or a single tax rate for the town, it would be ten dollars and seventy cents estimated. So the residential factor adopted by the community governs the percentage of tax levy that is to be paid by the residential property owners. A residential factor of one will result in the taxation of all property at the same rate, the uniform rate. The law does, however, allow you to shift more onto commercial, as high as fifty percent above the uniform rate. So the history of the differential tax rate in Winthrop over the years historically has maintained a single tax rate. Shifting the tax onto the commercial, industrial, and personal property would create a greater tax burden for those properties, while the residential properties would only benefit from a small savings, mainly because Winthrop is comprised mainly of residential properties, where ninety-three point eight percent of the town is residential. You'd be shifting to a very small percent of six percent of the valuation of the town. So is there any questions up until that point?
Any questions on the council?
I can wait till the end, but-
In the same vein of making decisions, the council would also entertain these other factors that come into it as an exemption, residential exemption. It's an exemption within the residential class. It's not increasing any value or collecting any more value than what it already would be taxed to that class. But within the residential class, the tax burden from lower-assessed properties that are the principal residents of the taxpayer would shift to higher-assessed properties and properties that are not the principal residents of the taxpayer. The exemption shifts a portion of the tax burden within the residential class away from the low-value, single-family homes and condominiums to multifamily properties, apartment buildings, and non-residential property owners. The fit for this, although some of the surround- Winthrop's the only town in this county, but in some of the surrounding cities, the residential exemption has been adopted. And towns on the Cape that have many non-year-round homeowners. So if it's something you would like to entertain or thought about, the towns that have adopted this are like Mash Beach, Asbury, Barnstable, Kirkland, Everett, Nantucket, Provincetown, Truro, Boston, Cambridge. So where landlords may own many, many apartment buildings, non-owned or occupied, is a possibility that it would work. In the town of Winthrop, though, I would believe that ninety-five percent of the properties are owned or occupied, or occupied by family members. So the shift wouldn't work in this town, in my opinion. The open space discount does not come into play in the town because none is classified in that way. The small commercial exemption works in this kind of the same way as the residential exemption. If you had large commercial properties versus small mom-and-pop-type stores within the town, you could possibly shift to that bigger commercial property. I'll just let you know, there's only a handful of towns that have actually adopted the small commercial exemption, Braintree being one of them, that shifts to the mall that's there. But Auburn, Avon, Avon has a large industrial park that they shift to, ten percent. Ellingham. So again, this is a shift within the commercial class. It can shift up to ten percent of the commercial tax burden from eligible parcels to ineligible parcels. The eligible parcels must have a valuation of less than a million dollars and be owned or leased by a business that employs fewer than ten employees, as certified by the Department of Revenue, which is our division. And the assessors do receive that report yearly. The small commercial exemption, it's similar to the residential exemption in that there's unfortunately nothing to really shift towards in Winthrop, and it would be within the commercial class. It doesn't make, would not make sense, in my opinion, to adopt it. And the Board of Assessors has consistently recommended that small commercial exemption not be adopted. It places an unjustified additional burden on the other commercial properties and all the industrial properties. The savings the property owner may receive, in some instances, is not passed on to the small commercial tenants within the building.
Thank you, Patrick. So we had to assume that your recommendation would be to maintain a uniformed rate?
Yeah, it's a conclusion that the board has, you know, given their opinion on it. My opinion, it's just too small of a base of commercial to shift to. And just to see how it works is the last page of this presentation is a spreadsheet.
I noticed the spreadsheet, you used the factors. And if you went to the top factor of one point five percent, the average residential rate would go down about three percent on the rate, and the average commercial would go up fifty percent. And if you did that factor at half of it, so one and a quarter, the average residential would go down one point six percent, and the average commercial up twenty-five. So as in many of the past years, it seems that a uniformed tax rate is in order. But where it's a public hearing, I will ask any members of the public wish to be heard on this.
Just as to the business classification, I think it's unfair, especially in this year with the inflation and everything else going up, the electricity bills, the low end. One small business that I personally know of went from thirty-seven hundred to forty-six hundred dollars a month on the electric bill. These are small stores that we have to service us, that we depend on for sponsoring our community events, helping out with the yearbook, sponsoring our teams. And to add, you know, to increase that by fifty percent over in one small year, in the wrong year, where you have inflation, I just think it's impossible, and they're going to run certain businesses actually out of town, if not close completely. So I just really would like you to reconsider any possibility of transferring it. I think we should stay steady where we are, especially during this particular economic climate, and see where we end up, and reconsider it in future years.
Thank you very much. Any members of the council? Okay, Vice President Ruggiero?
Thank you for the presentation, thank you for the comments. I just have a question, not really a question, but you touched on the new growth, the new growth figure, and how important that is for municipalities. I'm looking at the chart here, and it seems like we've bounced back to sort of the pre-COVID level of new growth that the town might be accustomed to. But maybe a question for the town manager. Could you just give the council a reminder on sort of how new growth is captured and what types of projects there are that, you know, don't mention specific properties, obviously. But like, how we kind of capture that number and just kind of harp on a little bit its importance and how we kind of increase revenue for the town?
Yeah, well, it's new, you know, new growth is just that, right? It's new building permits, whether it's commercial buildings and/or, you know, single-family homes, multifamilies, and sending new construction, you know, above and beyond. No, it's just a remodel, remodels are already captured. It's the new buildings that go up. You capture it there, you can also capture some new growth on personal property as well, but for the most part, it's just on, you know, the new property. So a town like, you know, pretty developed town like Winthrop, that's a pretty common number. You know, if we add a larger commercial tax base and things like that, you might see it if we did a new building. If we were able to get a commercial building, a middle-school site, you'd certainly see a bump in new growth at that point, you know, and things like that. So that's where it comes from.
So is this, you know, it's not necessarily, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the town of Winthrop, it's not necessarily new growth, you know? You might experience in other cities where, yeah, you know, River Beach, for example. All these buildings, we don't really have that. So from what I understand, we have to kind of work a little bit harder to capture that new growth figure?
You're going to have additions and stuff like that, but mostly it's for, like, down on Somerset Street, you had twenty-six units come in or whatever, and that will be new growth when it hits the- And that two hundred to two fifty number was pre-COVID, pretty much consistent?
Yeah. And it's similar, I mean, the town I came from, a little higher than that, but not much, three eighty, you know, right around there, you know? And you see pockets of it, obviously, you know, you referenced Linfield, Linfield Marketplace. When they did that, the new growth was two million dollars, you know? So I mean, it's, those kind of big projects help, but, you know, we don't have that. Right now, we don't have the opportunity for those, so.
Any other questions? Well, we'll close the public hearing, and we thank the assessors. And since the assessors are here, and they still have work to do on this rate, we did have Finance Committee meeting this evening, and this was brought up and was going to be taken in old business, but I would like to ask to- A motion to take out of order the old business item for fiscal year twenty-three tax classification. There's a motion by Vice President Ruggiero, a second by Councilor Flahcat to take out of order. So there is a motion that the Town Council, from the Town Manager, that the Town Council maintain a uniformed tax rate for all classes of property for fiscal twenty-three. Authorize Town Manager Moreno to sign and electronically submit the LA five to the Department of Revenue and Town Council approve of electronic signatures on behalf of the Town Councilors. Councilor Belcher, the Finance Committee met earlier, and do you have any decision on this from them?
This came out of committee with a positive recommendation.
All right, this was unanimously approved by the Finance Committee earlier this evening. There's a motion, it does not, well, we will have a second, even though we don't require a second, by DeMarco. And any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilor Honan?
Yes.
Councilor Facillo? Councilor Munson?
Yes.
Councilor Belcher?
Yes.
Councilor DeMarco?
Yes.
Councilor Flahcat?
Yes.
Councilor Aiello? Vice President Ruggiero?
Yes.
President Lucero?
Yes. And again, thank you, Patrick, and thank you, committee, thank you, Peter, Kathy, and Alan for your work. Greatly appreciated. Public comment. Public comments. Public comments. Yes?
Bill Schmidt, precinct five, just wanted to reiterate, which I said at the last meeting, I'm in favor of increasing the COLA base for the retirees and call to thirteen thousand. I also wanted to commend the group that was working on the committee handbook. I met with them, I don't know when that was, but that was a very productive session.
Thank you. Any other public comments? First round of public comments. Seeing none, we'll go to correspondence.
I received none.
We will go to committee reports, finance.
So the Finance Committee met prior to the meeting this evening. It was myself and Councilor Honan. The first item we took up was the appropriation of seven hundred and fifty thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars to replace the lead water service line. We discussed this a little bit earlier. But this is a zero-interest ten-year bond from the MWRA. We've done this every year, we have about four years left. We've actually already paid off the first year's bond. This came out of committee with a positive recommendation. The second item was increasing the retiree COLA base from twelve thousand to thirteen thousand. Our base hasn't increased in the past ten years in order to help fund our pension, which has gone very well. But it's time to increase the COLA to provide some relief to our retirees, especially given the inflation that we see now. So this came out of committee with a positive recommendation as well. We covered the FY tax classification. And the final item we took up in the committee was the police body camera contract. So we saw the presentation on that this evening. I don't, let me see if I have the full motion in front of me, hold on.
On the body suit?
Yeah.
No, we have a motion here, but you came out with positive recommendation.
Yeah, there's a positive recommendation in that as well.
Well, thank you very much. School Department report. We, School Committee met last evening. We had a presentation from Brian Curley, the principal of the middle school. Brian is just an incredibly hard worker and does an incredible job with the middle school. And he talked to us a little bit about programs, academic and athletic, co-curricular activities. And it was very enlightening for the committee. We also discussed the upcoming break, which the children are very much looking forward to, as well as, I'm sure, the staff. But, and that was it at School Committee last evening. Town Managers' report.
Thank you, Council President. As the council knows, I sent out the draft of the trash ordinance for review. We'll have that on a meeting in January to take a look at and discuss. I attended the Metro Mayor's meeting this past week, first one in person in a while. There's a lot of review over legislation surrounding housing, some of the stresses that our schools and, you know, local municipalities render with a lot of new students coming, you know, from other parts of the country and things like that, other parts of the world, actually. So there's legislation around that to try to get some increased funding for the schools and, you know, housing for the families that come into town. More to follow on that in the future. Our company, Brightly slash, you know, formerly known as School Dude, is starting the building assessments. We had two good meetings. Steve Cal, Rich Stefoni, and myself met with the company twice. They've got the building list, they've passed it off to the vendor that's going to be doing the assessments, and they should be starting in January. So we're excited about that. As everyone knows, it's getting colder, and that means snow's coming. So I know DPW Director Cal is here, but we are ready for the plow season. Him and I have had many conversations about it. Even though we are down some staff members with retirements and other reasons, we've got, you know, private contractors and staff members. So we feel like, you know, while it will be certainly a strain and difficult, we'll be able to get through this winter season with that. Met with the Maya rep today, Assistant CFO Robbie Powers and I. And staff members met with the Maya rep. We renewed all our policies, every policy we have with Maya. We went over deductibles, potential Maya credits we can get, you know, ways to save our EAP program, you know, things like that, you know, kind of a review. They do that annually, we sign off on it, so it was a good review of the policies. Talked about some deductibles that may need to be tweaked, things like that, so. Had the CFO interviews last week with School Superintendent Lisa Howard and John Petron from Community Paradigm. We had three candidates, we really focused in on one, so we're excited about that. We're checking references now, so more to follow on that, so we'll have some info on that hopefully in the next few weeks. We're also, and this week, we're going to be meeting with a few law firms to, the RFP that we put out, interview a few of the firms, ask some follow-up questions, and hopefully get some movement on that in the next, before the new year. And union contracts update, I would like to give that. We had our first meeting with the Patrolman and Sergeant Union today, so we're working on the next contract, you know, which would start July one, twenty twenty-two, and go through to twenty twenty-five. But we've had the first initial meeting with them, and we'll have to set up with the Superior Union in the near future, so. That's all I have, and certainly open any questions to follow-up comments.
Council Munson?
Thank you, Council President. Did you, either of you mentioned during the School Committee meeting or during your Town Manager meeting, the negotiations that were happening with the school assistants? They were-
I'm not privy to any negotiations, I mean, they're usually confidential, private, you know? They don't discuss the ongoing negotiations.
So it's, so we can't back-
There's nothing discussed last night at the School Committee meeting in public.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I will say, I did speak during the week with Michael, and I'm going to butcher the last name, Trapaneri. He's a senior project manager with Mast dot. I've had, some people have talked to me about potential pilot project going on on Bennington Street. And I was under the impression that this pilot project was going to be from Wood Island to Orient Heights, and I was kind of upset about it and that we weren't included in this. But the project is going to be from- and I was under the impression that this pilot project was going to be from Wood Island to Orient Heights, and I was kind of upset about it and that we weren't included in this, but the project is going to be from past Orient Heights, basically where the old casket company was, down towards the Beauchamp School, and I believe it's going to be a pilot project involving like one lane of traffic, more, you know, narrowing the street a little bit to slow down the rates of speed. But talking with Michael, I thought it would be great if he would have the opportunity to come to a meeting. It's always great to have Mastart in front of us and to ask some questions, also ask some questions about Orient Heights and the intersection there, so he is hopefully going to be joining us the second meeting in January. Other than that, that is it. Thank you. Commission on Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations has not met, but that will maintain on the agenda. On old business, we have the first motion, which I will read, that the town council adopt the following order, order the town appropriate December $750,125 to pay cost of replacing lead water services lines, including all costs incidental and related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow a set amount in pursuant to Mass General Arch out the 44 Section 7, Paragraph 1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, for the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow all of a portion, all or a portion of such amount from the MWRA, and in connection therewith to enter into a loan agreement and/or financial assistance agreement with the authority, and otherwise to contract with the authority with respect to such loan for any and all grants or aid available for the project or for the financing thereof, that town manager is authorized to accept and expend any grants or aid available for the project or the financing thereof, provided that the amount of the authorizing borrowing for the project shall be reduced by the amount of any such grants or aids received that town manager is authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out this project. Councilor Belcher.
So this came out of finance with a positive recommendation. Again, this is something that we do every year, we have about four years left, so we want to keep the pace of about 100 services a year.
Okay. And again, this was discussed earlier, and Director Cala brought us up to date on it, this is an annual thing, this is a zero-interest loan through the MWRA, and our goal is to maintain the rate that we have been doing at roughly 100 services, full-line services a year. Any discussion, Council Munson?
Quick question, I hope. Are there any plans to replace partial lead services? And what exactly is partial versus full-lead service? Are you talking about from the water main, under the ground, in the street, to the house? If that's full?
T1 service, right, full-lead services from the connection to the water main all the way to the connection of the meter is identified as full-lead. Partial could be five feet of lead, somewhere within that, you know?
They do that?
Yeah, sometimes old repairs and things like that. A lot of partials are only on the private side right now, the town, over the years, has replaced from the water main and the street to the property line for their obligation, but the homeowners haven't taken it the rest of the way. So again, after the T1 services are addressed, it'll be an administrative decision as to whether or not we want to offer this same, you know, process on the partial services. We can talk then about whether or not it's a free service, if there's going to be some betterment fees and all that, but.
How many people have it?
Yeah.
Et cetera, et cetera.
And that's the problem, it's hard to identify all partial lead services. Over the years, repairs are made and they're not always reported, and so.
Any other questions? Seeing none, there was a motion made, it was coming out with positive recommendation, our last round roll call vote, please.
Councilor Honan?
Yes.
Councilor Ficillo? Councilor Munson?
Yes.
Councilor Belcher?
Yes.
Councilor DeMarco?
Yes.
Councilor Flahcutt?
Yes.
Councilor Aiello? Vice President Ruggiero?
Yes.
President Luteri?
Yes. Thank you. Also under old business, there's a motion that the town council vote to adopt the Winter Retirement Board's recommendation to increase the town retirees COLA base from 12,000 to 13,000, or take any other action relative thereto. There's a motion on the table, does not require a second, has positive recommendation from finance, Councilor Belcher?
Again, this, we haven't increased the COLA base for the past 10 years, we think that the pension is funded at a good pace now, and we can move to increasing this to the 13,000.
And this has been something that we've been very conservative on in many prior years, and I think now, you know, you look at social security going up, the economy as it is, inflation where it is, it's the right thing to do. Any questions on this? Yes, Vice President Ruggiero?
I guess one question and one comment. My question is, so for current employees, this would apply to them when they retire, it's not just retroactive to the folks that are already retired, right?
Correct.
Okay. So I think when we talk about retention, you know, maybe this is like another, another way to kind of retain talent here in town, so I'm in favor of this for that purpose, as well as the obvious one of, you know?
I think there's roughly, just under 600 retirees in the system right now.
Right.
And this is not a huge amount of money, we wish it could be more, but it definitely helps, every little bit helps in this, in this time, and I think it's the right thing to do.
You mentioned inflation, I mean, I think when we voted this down as a council last time around, I mean, a heck of a lot's happened, as the economic times go, so I think if we don't do it now, it's going to be even worse next time it comes up for a vote, and it's easier to catch up in small increments rather than larger ones.
Seeing no other discussion, our last round roll call vote on this also, please.
Councilor Honan?
Yes.
Councilor Ficillo? Councilor Munson?
Yes.
Councilor Belcher?
Yes.
Councilor DeMarco?
Yes.
Councilor Flahcutt?
Yes.
Councilor Aiello? Vice President Ruggiero?
Yes.
President Luteri?
Yes.
Tax classification, we did, there was one final motion that the town council vote to authorize the town manager to enter into a five-year contract with Axion Enterprises for police body cameras, cloud storage, and redaction software. Total cost of contract over five years is $291,443.40. There is a motion with positive recommendation out of finance, Councilor Belcher?
Based on the presentation we saw as council tonight and discussion during the finance committee meeting, this came out with a positive recommendation.
Questions on this? And this, again, we just had this presentation, I'll ask the chief if he wishes to say anything on this again.
No, I know, you keep, this is the right thing to do, this is, you know, what 21st century policing looked like, this is accountability and transparency in policing, and also, it's a benefit to the officers because it shows the perspective of the whole incident instead of fragments of incidents being leaked out on social media, so again, you know, I applaud this council for taking action on this and allowing us to proceed and keeping up with the 21st century policing technology.
Thank you so much. Any other discussion, Council Munson?
I too agree, and I couldn't be more supportive of this, this is wonderful, I think it's good for both the public and for the police, and I think this is a great move forward, and it's not provoked by some state or federal mandate, so it just shows a proactiveness on your part, and I'm really thankful. I do want to be cognizant, though, of the budgeting and the assessments of it, so will this, will the school dudes cover this too under their assessments?
It's, no, the school dudes are just doing buildings, so this is, yeah.
Just buildings, so stuff internally in different departments is not audited for value and the need for replacement, et cetera?
No, it's just facilities, like HVAC systems, boilers, things like that, in the building infrastructure, windows, doors, things like that, that's what the school does.
And as far as the, putting it into the budget, that is something that will have to work out in the beginning of the new year.
Yeah, we've got it covered for FY '23, but we'll start talking about it, and we'll show it in the FY '24 budget and beyond.
Council Flahcutt?
Thank you, Council President. Does that mean they're not auditing the computers with this?
They'll log them, but no, this is a, this is a building assessment, our IT needs are being done by another company, UMass is working on that, taking a look at that, so that's not what their contract is.
All right. Seeing no other discussion, this came out of finance with positive recommendation, does not need a second, the motion has been made, our last round roll call vote, please.
Councilor Honan?
Yes.
Councilor Ficillo? Councilor Munson?
Yes.
Councilor Belcher?
Yes.
Councilor DeMarco?
Yes.
Councilor Flahcutt?
Yes.
Councilor Aiello? Vice President Ruggiero?
Yes.
President Luteri?
Yes.
Now, we have two other items under old business that will be continued, one is on the committee handbooks, and one is on the ordinance review committee recommendations. The goal is to have, go over the second half of the recommendation, first meeting in January, and then do any follow-up with questions, input from the public, and either vote the second meeting in January or a meeting in February. It will then, certain items, as Vice President said in previous meetings, certain items will go to the state for home rule petition and then come back to us, and once they're back, the majority of these would be voted on a November, at a regularly scheduled town election, which would be November of 2023. Under new business, we have three items which will be referred to finance, the first is to appropriate $989,542 from Certified Free Cash, the second is to transfer $24,232.64 from salary reserve and appropriate $30,570, $67.36 from free cash to cover that for the total of $54,800, and the town council vote to transfer $5,000 from town council reserve, the town manager's general office employee recognition line, and those will all be sent to finance. Second round of public comment.
Yes, again, thank you for your support and your vote on the body cameras, and more importantly, thank you for your support on what town has been working on for years, increasing that 12,000 to 13,000, you know, while all of us in this room may not need that $30, but certainly our retirees who don't make great wages, that $30 would come in handy for them, so thank you, unfulled motions.
Okay.
I would just like to make a comment, Ken Goodwin, 300,000, with the discussion upcoming about the revision of rules and ordinances committed, which is definitely the hot topics, I would just say that it definitely needs some serious discussion, but not endless discussion, it's been nearly in the town for nearly a decade, and it's really, really way overdue, so I would say, please do not make some meaningful suggestions and bring some knowledge to the town residents. I would request that the town manager and the town CFO work collaboratively with Senator Turco and others, and educate the residents of Winter, of the monies that could be captured, potentially for our town, and then bring that information to the residents of Winter. So that is what I would highly recommend moving forward with all these discussions, when it comes time for the town to have meaningful discussions on the rules and ordinance.
I appreciate it, you've made some really good comments during the prior meetings with the OSC, and we thank you for that. Public comment, one, two, all right. Public relations. Santa Claus is coming to town, Christmas Eve, starting at about 4, 4:30 at Deer Island, I think, and ending about 9 o'clock at the fire station, that is just a unique winter prevent, and it is anticipated by all, I know, and thank everyone for putting that together, and thank Santa Claus for doing his job. Also, a couple of things I have to, first of all, I would, well, I'd like to wish a very happy birthday to Ms. Karen Chavez. She does an incredible amount of work for this town, and it does not go unnoticed, thank you, happy birthday. Also like to thank the employees, you know, it's the end of the year, whatever, and this town, I, personally, I think it, it looks really good. Do we always have work to do? We do, but the employees come to work every day, and I thank them immensely for that, the school employees, the town employees, DPW, all the departments. It's just really a special town, I was at an event down at the Elks last week, and you see a lot of people that you don't see on a day-to-day basis, and you don't get the chance and the opportunity to thank them, so on behalf of the council, thank you to all the employees of the town for a job well done, and you make our town proud, and I think you could see the benefits of your work out there, the town looks great. Also like to wish everyone a very, very Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy and Healthy New Year, be very careful out there on the road, a lot of college kids back, kids are going to be on vacation, it's just a special time of the year, it's a happy time, it's a sad time, it's a reflection time, but enjoy it the best you can. Ask Council Honan anything, Council Munson?
I'd like to just say somewhat similar in your, in your tone, but I just want to say thanks, but it's, I feel like this is a great town, we have a lot of great employees, we have a lot of great volunteers, I mean, so many committee members are just volunteers, I mean, just strictly out of activism and wanting to make this town better, and I just think it's incredible, a lot of activists, a lot of residents who just care, so I just want to say thanks and happy holidays.
Council Belcher?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Since the holidays have come, and Happy New Year, everybody, God bless.
Council Flahcutt?
I would also like to thank all the people that come to our meetings, I think it's really a good sign for our town that we get people to come out to the council meetings, I tend to harp about it, about it when I met Seal Harper. And I'm just very proud of all of you that come, and I wish everybody a very happy holiday season, happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas.
Vice President Ruggiero?
Two quick things, one, tomorrow at, from 9:30 to 12 at the Delio Senior Center, CAFIC will be there conducting its second fuel assistance program application session. I know, we talked about this at a couple council meetings already, but cost of energy rates and gas are going up, it's a real burden for a lot of folks, and so this is one way that people who are neat during the winter can take advantage of it, that's tomorrow, and then they have a couple more in January, February, March, April, but the next one's tomorrow. Also, just finding out that there's an energy bill checkout event tomorrow at the library, so it's a big day for energy awareness, and this one is from 1 to 4 p.m., it is a way to help you understand the utility bill and learn about utility programs of mass save, rate discounts, and other fuel assistance programs, so one at the Senior Center, 9:30 to 12, another at the library from 1 to 4, and I also want to just give a quick congratulations to the Chair of FinCom, who has, one of our volunteers that Council Munson hadn't mentioned, who was serving as the Chair of FinCom and helped us throughout the budget season this past year, was recently tapped as the Secretary for the Executive Office for Administration and Finance in the Healy administration, so we are lucky to have Matt Gorkowitz as our current FinCom Chair, and I think it's great when, you know, as Council Munson mentioned, just volunteers kind of stepping up, and there's a lot of talent in this town, and we're obviously looking for, you know, there are always committee openings and ways to get involved, and so, you know, we're really lucky to have that.
Matt's a great guy, and that's a very impressive position that he was just appointed to, and we wish him all the best, and being the council president, one of the first calls I've made was to make sure he would still be able to be on the, so his indication is that he would still love to hopefully have the opportunity to stay
That's fantastic.
on the FinCom, so that's fantastic to him, we wish him nothing but the best, he's a great guy. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Councilor DeMarco, second by Councilor Munson.